City recorded.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Daughter Woman Luanna Odinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst. City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you Tina. In your package you've had a copy of the minutes from previous meeting of April 11th, 2023. You had a chance to peruse those. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
If you have motion on the board to approve those minutes of regular session April 11th, 2023, it has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of "I." May's like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Proclaimations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor. Yes, that's me. We do have a group here today. And you want to introduce?
Sure. Well, if you don't know how track and field works, it's a pretty individualistic sport. But there is team scoring. So if you have a lot of first, second, third place finishes, you compound your score and eventually at the end of the meet, all the teams have the score and you can win the meet. In the ancient year of 1998, spring of 98, the CCHS girls track team won the, it was at that time the IMAC conference. And it was the first time it had been done and it has not been done since then. The track team hasn't won as a team conference or been lots of conference winners, there have been all state, but we haven't won a conference championship. And like the mayor, I was talking to the mayor about this last week. When our, when our youth do well, we recognize them and we, we present them with accolades to let them know that we do, we see what you're doing and we want you to continue doing that. And it's, track's not an easy sell. I mean, first of all, you're trying to get kids to come run, which isn't something fun anyway. Let's just all be honest about it. There's a couple of you weirdos Jenna that really like running, but I'm just kidding. Jenna's the best, but running, getting somebody to come out and want to run isn't easy. And it's not something that they're never going to pack out Hedrick Stadium, Larry Williams Stadium, Hedrick Field to watch you run around. They're not going to do it. So it's a lot of parents and, and a lot of, a lot of close friends that come after these meets and that's about what you get. But they came together this year. I think it's real important that we bring them in here and what Coach Dudley's done with, you know, this, this wasn't, it was just an activity that maybe some kids did and he's trying to build something back with it so that it's competitive every year. It better not be 25 years between conference championships again. So that's, that's, we want to recognize him now, but don't let this be the last time ladies, okay? Coach Dudley, did you, where you at? Is he in the hallway? You want to say anything?
No.
All right.
Tell Coach to come up and bring his team up. We're going to light up behind the, our photographer wants us to light up behind the council here. Congratulations Coach.
Thanks for not making a speech.
From the office of the mayor of Newport Tennessee, proclamation to Cock County High School Girls Track and Field Team. Whereas 2023 Cock County High School Track and Field season saw many individual and team accomplishments. And whereas several student athletes of the Cock County High School Track Team achieved personal records and rewrote modern school records. And whereas the Cock County High School Girls Track and Field Team gave an outstanding team performance on May 2nd, 2023 at the Twin Lakes Conference Meet. And whereas through hard work, discipline and talent, the Cock County High School Girls Track and Field Team placed first in the Twin Lakes Conference Meet, winning the conference championship, a feat not accomplished by the Cock County Girls Team in 25 years. And now therefore, in order to pay tribute to the Cock County High School Girls Track and Field Team, I Roland Dykes III, Mayor of the City of Newport, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim, May 9th, 2023, as Cock County High School Girls Track and Field Team Day and commend all citizens to recognize and support them on this great day. In witness whereof, I have hearing to set my hand and affix the seal of the City of Newport, Tennessee, the 9th day of May, 2023. Congratulations.
Now to the team and the parents, you don't have to stay for any of the rest of this. It's boring bureaucracy from here on out.
Okay, we will reconvene. Our next item on the agenda is our communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we got a short regular agenda and I've got a long agenda. It always seems to work out that way. The first, first thing I have is this year, we are going to go back to the old way of doing some things at the City Park Pool. I know when I grew up and when all y'all grew up, the City Park Pool was open from Memorial Day to Labor Day because that was the summer vacation hours and days, weeks and months for school. And when schools went to a shorter summer vacation, we, we changed the pool hours and days to coincide with that. And what I want to do this year is to try to go back to the old Memorial Day to Labor Day schedule again. And I may open a little later in the day and in August when school goes back to give folks that kids are in school, an opportunity to come and spend some time and also stay open later in the day after school hours so folks can come and spend some time. And just to see how that works. You know, we, we put a lot of work and expense into the pool and to only have that open two months a year is, is, is not really cost effective. And of course, we don't, we never did it to make money anyway. We did it as a service to the community. But I'm going to try it. I've mentioned it to, I think, most of you about, about doing that. But to make the official announcement and get it into the record, you know, we're going to, I've instructed Tim and his staff to make that happen this year. The new aquatics director that you all approved last month will be in charge of that. And so we're going to give it a try and see how it goes and hopefully it'll be a success. If you haven't noticed, we've got, you know, a few, few months back, you all were good with putting up a new flag pole out in front of City Hall to get it away from the old one on the building because when we put it at half staff, which it is right now, it would beat into the building and ruin the flags and we were consistently having to replace the flags. And so by moving it out in, farther out into the yard and away from the building, now that should extend the life of the flags and we will have to be constantly replacing them and eventually it will, it will be cost effective. But personally, I think it looks really nice being out there. Once it was done and to stand back and look at it, it makes the flags really pop out there, I think. But if you haven't noticed it, check it out when, when you leave tonight. Animal Control has received a grant, I think it's in your packet, but just pointed out and announced it from Petco Love in the amount of $10,000 for medical and life-saving procedures for the animals. And so that's something that Lisa had applied for and got. And so that, that's a great windfall. We passed out the budget last month for you guys to review. We have the first reading on the agenda tonight, but I want to make you aware, I could have done this during the, the budget part, but I, I went ahead and put it at the front end. Some changes that have been made to the budget, I think most of, most of them you know about, maybe not everybody about every one of them. If you recall last month, the partnership had the group come about the tracking system that, that looks at how many people get off and where they, where they go spend money and where they stay and all that. And in individual talks with y'all, you, everybody said they wanted to fund that for another year. And so we have included, put that into the budget because it was not in the budget before the presentation last month. One thing that has been suggested by a couple of you all is to put in motion that the county be approached next year about splitting the cost. And I'm, I think that's, I think that's a fair request. Also, we weren't, when we were doing the budget, of course, we started in February and we really didn't have a clear view of what to put in for the welcome center. We weren't sure, we hadn't hired Monica yet, but it's still just kind of languishing up there. So we did not include it in the initial budget. And now that it's open and we're seeing what, what, you know, where we're at with it and it got opened actually quicker than we anticipated, we have added $100,000 to the budget to fund the welcome center. And keep in mind that that money is paid for out of the hotel motel tax. You know, a couple of years ago, we put a 2% increase on the hotel motel tax and that will, that funds the welcome center. Also, we put, we added $5,000 to community development. For years, we cleaned up lots and mowed lots around town because it wasn't, there wasn't that many of them. Most of the time when we get on people, they'll, they'll grudgingly finally mow their lot and we've not had to come in and step in and, and mow a whole lot of them. But for whatever reason, you know, this year, we, we are just buried in them. We've got unkept lots everywhere that need mowing. And number one, we did, we really just don't have the, the people to go do that, to be mowing yards. We'd about have to be mowing yards every day, literally the way it is right now. If you all are out and about like I am, I know you've seen it. I know I've had some of y'all to mention some in your neighborhoods. And so I, I know that, I know that y'all have noticed it as well. So what we're going to do, and this is what they do in, like in Marstown and Greenville and some other places, we are going to bid that out. And we put $5,000 into the budget to pay for that. And we will still follow the same rules that we did when we were doing it in that we will, we will give them notice, then when they don't mow, we'll, we'll turn it over to whoever gets the bid on the mowing service. They will go in and mow it and then they will certify to us that they have mowed it and then we'll put a lien on the property, just like we do when we do it. But it's going to, I mean, it's, it's just gotten to the point where we can't keep up with it with the, so this is what they do in other places. And we're just trying to, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, we're just following suit. Finally, last month I talked about our budget and the audit. We've made some headway on getting our audit done, but we're still not where we need to be. There, there is a distinct probability that our, our audit will not begin because I think we're about to the point and about too late on it to get it in, to get it to the state, get it approved and get it online before our budget would need to be approved in, in June. Because as soon as we have our second reading in June, we send our budget to the state and it takes, is a two-week turnaround on the time that we send it to them and that they review it and approve it. So we meet the second Tuesday, that's two more, that's the fourth Tuesday in June. At the quickest it comes back, okay. If the, they've already put us on notice that if our audit is not online, and that, they're the one puts it online, not us. We just have to get our auditor to get it to them so they can get it online at their website, the, the controller's website. But they have notified us that if our audit is not online, by, by the time we send in our budget in June, they will not approve our budget. And so that will require in June that not, we will still have a second reading on the budget because the first reading is tonight. But we will still have a, a second reading on our budget so it's ready to go the minute that we, that the audit gets in. And we'll, we will have to vote in June to continue into July on this year's budget so we can continue to pay the bills. Because as of Ju-, at midnight on July 1, we'll be operating without a budget if we don't. And that means we can't write any checks, we can't spend any money. We can't, we, we can't take any business action. So it, I'm just giving you a heads up. You know, we talked about this at length last month and y'all sent some letters out and we got part of the information in, well, the auditor did. It's not coming to us, it's going to the auditor. But I mean, we're, we've done all we can do. So we're, we're at the mercy of the forces that be. If the information gets to the auditor, that they're wanting that the auditor gets the job done and gets it into the state and then the state gets it online to free us up of this, this conundrum or under. We've also been put on notice, you know, we have several grant projects, you know, we pay for those upfront, they're all reimbursement grants and we submit our, once we pay the bill, we submit the, a copy of the invoice and a copy of our check to the state and they reimburse us our 90% or 75% or whatever we get back. We're also on notice, we're not going to get reimbursed anything till that's fixed too. So we're really getting under the gun on a lot of stuff. The states, I mean, and they're holding us accountable because we, we're considered the parent entity of these other entities that technically they consider to be under us and under our control and they are not. They're not under our control. So that's about all I got, Mayor.
Okay.
That's enough.
Yes, enough.
Did you have any feedback from the other two boards? I know Miss Burch is not on the board, but she's here. Did you have any feedback from NU or the grammar school?
I have not. I think the mayor.
Those letters that we had sent out and the mayor, anybody?
Yeah, I, I think the mayor did, but I have not and I don't think Tina has, yeah.
Just preliminary stuff, didn't, just acknowledging that the information had been received, but pretty much it wasn't, didn't, wasn't any, I guess, resolution one way or the other, just that it had been received. Miss Burch, would you like to say something?
I hate to interrupt, but we had turned in to the auditors whatever they had asked. Like when you sent the letter to our board, they shared it with me and it said there were questions that needed answering. And that's when I sent it to the auditors, said what questions, you know, were they needing to be answered? Because we've answered them, provided anything they've asked us. Plus I talked to Haley, I texted her last night because we, I thought we, Tina and I were going to get an email with information about our audit coming to a closure. And they don't have that yet, but we have provided everything they've asked. They, we still have a lot of paperwork they've left on our ta-, you know, table. I think they're just really loaded with things that they're trying to get done, but I was telling her that it's kind of, we feel like, it looks like we're not doing our part and we're trying to, we've turned in everything they've asked.
Well, it seems to be.
And I don't know what more we can do with the auditor. I don't know. I asked Tina for some, I, today and night I said, just tell us what the route we can take. I'm trying to get it closed because we're at their mercy.
There seems to be a little bit of disconnect then because they're, they're telling an entirely different story.
Correct. Both, I mean, we don't know, but both sides are pointing fingers at the other. You know, the auditor says it's the grammar school's fault, the grammar school says it's the auditor's fault. We don't know. You know, we, we, I mean, you know, we, we can't, we can't take a side because we don't know.
And we're not trying to cause a conflict, honestly. And I know the controller did call us and things like that. The auditors were there the day that she called. But I think that they tell us that they have so much business, they have less personnel. Some have been really sick on their staff. So others are having to pick up more work. And of course, we can't close out in ourselves, that's really the auditors. So if you'll offer guidance, I'll be glad to proceed with it. But as I say, I've got text messages and emails, I sent you some, to show that we're trying to communicate with them to get it all completed and closed. Anything they ask, we provide. Tina or Terry, I've even calculated all by myself to try to get some closure.
Yeah, more than what she should have had to do.
And, but has Haley spoken to you about any?
The last I heard was where they're hoping for the end of May and I think there's a little bit of both here as far as it stems back to getting the audit information late from Newport Utilities. They did not get it until March the 18th. That is far beyond the deadline of when we were supposed to have it in to begin with. At that moment in time, every accounting firm is working on taxes. So they had to lay it aside, work on taxes because we're not their only client.
Right.
Then they had to go back and pick it back up and then go back to whatever point they left it and start again.
Well, and that's why I asked the question. I didn't ask the question to say grammar school's holding this up. What I was asking is had either entity had feedback for, because you know, I'm more blind than you guys are. All I get is what we hear, you know, what we talk about here. But you know, it does seem like that letter we signed that we sent to those two boards, if that can be accomplished and we get these things by October like it should be from here out, then maybe we won't be in the same type of meeting next May or April or whatever month this is. But still.
Well, we've always taken pride in getting our budget in on time. And this, you know, I don't know if we're going to this year or not. I mean, it's looking like we're not. And that, that upsets us because again, we take pride in getting that done. Because over the years and I know when Randy was the, the fire chief that we, it was September before we got a budget in. And you talk about frowning on that, and they frown on that. And so we've, over eight years, I know, we've gotten, and maybe nine, we've gotten our budget in on time. And I just don't, I'm afraid it's not going to happen this year and that's why I wanted you all to know it upfront, that it's, it's very possible we're going to have to extend this, extend this budget year to be able to continue to operate. Because that's the only thing you can't do, other than shut down. And that's not an option. So it's not uncommon to do that. We've done it over my career and, and I'm sure the others that have been around the city for a long time, we've done that many times over the past. It's not like that's unheard of. It's not that. It's just, it's a pride thing in a way. But the fact that we can't get any money back on our grant is a big deal. That we, you know, we, they're not going to reimburse us on our grant monies until this is fixed. And of course, they will once it is fixed. It won't be like, well, we'll never get the money. We will. It just won't be in a timely fashion. And it, and it kind of sulles our, our record with the state because we've done so well for so long. And we, you know, we, we had a bit of a bad reputation for a long time with the state from a lot of different standpoints and financial being the worst. And we, we fixed that. You know, our audits have been clean for years, our budgets have been on time for years and we've turned that image around with the surrounding cities and counties with the state. And so I just hate to see us look like we're, we're falling into old bad habits again. But I'm afraid that's through no fault of our own, I think that's where we're going to end up with, with having to extend the budget. I'm afraid it just can't get done in time because of the way, the way that, the time that it takes for the process to play out.
We are, and as far as the utility is concerned, they finally, they finally did get theirs up?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't want to take any credit for it, but I had to badger them every board member, you know, just to get that one done. So it's not good business practice, you know, to always be late with, with the audit. So.
The only, and I, and I hate that we can start raveling all day and I don't really like doing that, but I do want to make you aware of another situation that's kind of a lot that it just really annoys me along that same line. You know, one thing I will absolutely say is since the Mayor Dykes has been involved, the only way we can get anything done down there is through him. And, and he is a great ambassador that goes down there to every meeting. Luanna goes to a lot of the meetings and that being there has really helped get things done because, you know, when we have people there that speak up, then, then that kind of gets their attention and we can get things done. But that's kind of where we've been now for a number of years, really. And the mayor can attest to this because I tell him all the time, I hate to bother you with this, but it's the only way we can get anything done is for you to go to the board. And so, you know, that's, that's, that's been a, a standard operating procedure for a number of years now, at least four, I know. And one, a new thing that I doubt anybody on the board is aware of because it only come to our attention this past week. Ben asked for a couple of NU big people to come and meet with him. The mayor and I went and looked at a utility pole that has got to be moved out of our right of way up to our entrance at the, at the woodland park. And so Ben called them and was going to show them where we, we would like for them to move it to. And they said, well, they'd be glad to, but there'd be a $60 consultation fee. And you know, when did they start that? You know, when, when if you talk to them about anything, they're going to charge you a $60 consultation fee. You know, that was a nuke, that was a nuke on Ben and that's a nuke on me and I'm going to bet it's a nuke on you all. But, and I, I get that they're trying to make money every way they can, but man, you know, they, they bleed us at every opportunity. I can tell you that right now. And so Ben told them, no, never mind, he'd just marked the spot and they could come do whatever. We wouldn't pay them $60 to come up there and for him to say, if you don't care, move the pole over here. And they, and, and then she told him that, well, it would probably end up being charged anyway. So I, you know, that, that really aggravated me too. That now if you even talk to them about something that you need done, it's their pole, it's in our way, we didn't put it there, they did. But not only we got to pay to move it, but we got to pay them to come talk about moving it. I mean, that's starting to get a little ridiculous, I'm sorry. I mean, that's starting to get a little ridiculous, I'm sorry. I'm gonna get off my stump, that gets me wound up. But, you know, just, just to give you an idea of what we're dealing with.
Well, I have-
Thank you, Mayor.
We talked about that yesterday. I haven't had a chance to talk to them since I was out of town all day today. But I will get with them before the week's over and we'll kinda hash that one out. I don't know when that process was instituted because it hadn't been like that before. And apparently it was the board instituted that, that fee when Luanna or Nori were at one of the meetings, so.
Well, we've always met with them to look, you know, talk about moving something or, you know, getting something done and, you know, just talking about it, what'd be the best way or whatever. Never, ever had anybody said anything about a consultation fee.
Alderman Ball has another, another event he needs to attend. But we still have quorum and can conduct the business of Newport, Tennessee.
These problems with the audits not being submitted, is this the first time occurrence? Is this happening?
It, it happened last year. We got dragged out last year by the, by NU's internal investigation. Tina had to really just browbeat and browbeat and beg, and the mayor had to talk to them. And we went through this same thing last year, but we still got everything in on time.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Item six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. Item A is discussion of reappointment to the Fire Civil Service Board, Amy Ball.
I'll say that. Amy had kinda come in mid-term for us during someone else's term, that, that couldn't finish, couldn't keep the scheduling process. And she is actually the one that the city's representative and the fire department's representative select. So it's more of just a kind of a notice that, that they've agreed to reinstall her back in as their civil service board member. I guess that large, I'm not sure of that.
Yes, yeah, that's just, this is just an announcement, it's not an appointment.
Yes, sir.
She was appointed by the other two members.
Right. Any other discussion? All right, we'll move on. Item seven is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Does anyone have anything to report? If not, we'll move on to old business or unfinished business. Consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2023-06, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
Mayor, since the city attorney, Hurst, isn't here, I'll read that caption into the record.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2023-06, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2022-2023 for the Newport Grammar
Heard the reading of the ordinance. It was the board's pleasure.
Make a motion to accept that second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2023-06, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School. It has been properly seconded. We need roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2023-07, amending the zoning map to rezone Sequoia Drive.
Mayor, that ordinance number 2023-07, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Newport from R1 residential to C2 commercial located at 108 West Sequoia Drive.
Heard the reading of ordinance. It was the board's pleasure.
I'll make this. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2023-07, amending the zoning map to rezone Sequoia Drive. Has been properly seconded. Please, we need roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. New business, item A, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2023-08, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
Mayor, this is ordinance number 2023-08, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2022-2023 for Newport Grammar School. And to be clear, this is a second amendment. This is the first. We just had the second reading of the first amendment, and this is the first reading of the second amendment. These are separate amendments.
Who's on third?
Yeah. There you go, brother.
Okay. You've heard the reading of the ordinance. It was the board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Okay, motion to approve consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2023-08, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School, has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2023-09, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2023-09, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program for the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2022-2023. And that is for the city proper, and it is the final budget amendment for this fiscal year.
Heard the reading of the ordinance. It was the board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the board to approve consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2023-09, budget amendment for the city of Newport, has been properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item C is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2023-10, budget for the city of Newport.
Mayor, this is ordinance number 2023-10, budget for the city of Newport. This will be the first reading of our budget that we handed out last month with, including the, the changes named earlier. And so this, this will be the first reading of our budget for next year. And then we will have a public hearing and a second reading in June, God willing.
Okay, heard the reading of the ordinance. It was the board's pleasure.
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2023-10, budget for the city of Newport, has been properly seconded. Please have a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item A, for bids, purchases, and expenses, consideration of bids for heating and air unit for community center.
Is, is the request that bad?
Well, I got to thinking, James got me tore up because, about NU, because for me to change a light bulb, it cost me like 800 bucks just to get a, a truck to come and change a light bulb on our ballparks. And of course, everything's measured in candle height. And candle height can be 30, 40, 60, 90 feet with the, the lights that we have. And so the bucket truck that, that the city has guided us, we can't get to some of the, the big tickets, so we have to use them. And of course, again, we go to the mayor and say, can you help us?
And when we are on the list to try to get a big truck whenever they take one out of service.
Yeah, so we can get to those 90-foot stigs. So it's, we don't wanna do it with the fire truck, you know, with the, we've, we've done a few things with them, but it's, it's not good for us. 12 years ago, our town entered into a contract with Johnson Controls, all right? For about two years there, nothing really happened. And all of a sudden, we started going through a process with Johnson Controls that, that we changed out a train unit at the community center, that's air conditioning unit, that's changing all the lights in every municipal building, changing the airflow, doing, doing a lot of projects in every building. Within the first year of putting in a new Johnson Control, four compressor, air conditioning system, the fire department, under Randy's tenure, was coming down the Causeby Highway and called us and said, your air conditioner's on fire. So, so at that time, it was under a contract or a warranty. So we were able to replace our first four compressor unit, 36,000 square feet, air conditioning unit, at no cost to the city. Within 18 months of that unit being, being a product of hiring someone else as a subcontractor to put the unit in, so they bring in this engineering outfit and put these torpedoes to hold extra freon and do everything they're supposed to do so that the manufacturer can cover itself and say, well, we done what we're supposed to. 18 months goes by, we have, all of a sudden, we have a compressor that goes out, but not only one, we have two compressors. So we do our research, Mr. Fincham guides us, we call our insurance, we do our diligencies. Is it a power surge? Is it an interruption of service? It's a three-phase system? What happened here? What, what's going on? Well, our insurance doesn't believe in anything that, for us to stay under warranty, so we approach you, city council, to replace two compressors on the, on the unit at $20,000. So now, that's three. Less than a year ago, we put these monitors on and we did everything that we were supposed to, that's supposed to detect interruption of service, cut it off, not a surge protector, but a monitor. And guess what? No lightning strike within five miles, but we have a influx of service and it blows our compressors. So right now, we've been around a year with, you have phase one and you have phase two. We're working off of phase two to, to, to heat or to cool our 36,000 square feet. All right, so to make a long story short, for 30 years, we had a train with Randy Humphries that made that system work every day and never had any problems. We come in the first day under Johnson Control, and I say it, Johnson Control, they, they, we've had nothing but problems with our unit. And right now, we bid out, through finance and Tina's help, we bid out a new unit. Mr. Fincham asked us, is this our last big ticket? Because I think he, you guys had some concerns. We have one more ticket item that we're gonna put on the agenda possibly for next month. We'll see where it goes. But we have a bid of $95,300 to replace the air handler at the community center on the AC unit, replacing a Johnson Control unit to a train unit. And I would like to ask for your approval. It is a budgeted dollar. That's why it took us over a year to get to where we're at here. And Tina and James made sure to get that in our budget because we've had nothing but problems.
We, I say we, Tim and his staff did the work, but we consulted on it. For a lot, we, we, we tried to investigate every possibility of what might be causing this. We spent a lot of time looking at power surges. And, you know, of course, some of it's, it's beat up on NU night, but NU claims they don't have power surges, you know? And so, you know, we put this device on there to try to see if the surge does come. And according to that, they do. And when we tried to turn it into the insurance, they said that they checked the weather and there was, that's when it came, that's where that came from about, there was no lightning in the area that night. Because if we could have shown to some degree that it was a lightning strike, the insurance would have had to cover it. But they, they go back and check with the National Weather Service and there's, they tracked my radar, all lightning in an area, you see that on the weather all the time. And they said that according to the National Weather Service, there was no lightning strikes in this area during that time period. So they would not cover it. NU won't cover it because they say they don't have power surges. We talked about trying to put, he mentioned a surge protector. We, we talked at length about trying to come up with a way to put surge protection on there. And we, we never could come up with a way to do it for a three-phase unit. We also investigated the possibility was the power sometimes getting too weak to power a three-phase unit. Because it has to have a certain amount of power to keep all the components energized. And if the, if the, if it drops so low and then comes back quickly, it's just like a power surge. Even though it's not statistically probably a power surge, it actually just went back to its operating level that it was supposed to be at. But if it drops so low that components begin to shut down and then it picks back up, then it has the same effect as a, as, as a lightning strike or a power surge. Because it's, it's, you know, you're injecting a bunch of electricity into something that has powered down. So, you know, we, we looked for every route we could to try to get some relief on this to get out of having, for us just to have them bite the bullet and foot the bill. But every avenue we tried, we were, we were denied. And so I will vouch and verify that Tim and his staff, I, that's as hard as I've seen him work on anything, actually. He is-
Kickstand that hard.
Trying to get to the bottom of what was creating this problem. I mean, he worked and worked and worked and worried and called and he, he did everything he could do to investigate this and try to get to the bottom of it. We've had a multitude of conversations about it. And I, I don't, I wish I had an answer for it. We still don't have an answer for it. We have some thoughts, but nothing we can, that we can lay out here and say, here's the deal. We, we've tried and tried to, to identify it. And I'm, I'm kinda like him. You know, we, for years, we didn't have a problem. And the problem started when we changed the units and went to a different unit. So when all this fails, I, I guess that's kind of where we're at. We're looking at going back to the same brand we had before when we didn't have the problems. So hopefully, this will be the last time in, in, in the foreseeable future that we have to address this.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. It was the board's pleasure.
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the purchase of a new air compressor for Humphrey, by Humphries Heating and Air in the amount of $95,300. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call on that one, too.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Tim, just to confirm, these are budgeted monies?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We put the money in the budget this year at the beginning of the year, but we were just in case. But we, we tried every avenue we could to get out of having to spend it. We had it in there because we, we knew we might need it at the end of the day. And you can see how far we fought and dug and tried to claw our way out of not having to foot the bill for it. But everything, nothing worked for us. And so you can see, here we are in May, 10 months, 11 months in- And so you can see, here we are in May, 10 months, 11 months into the, the budget year before we, we pulled the trigger on it. So we exhausted every possibility before we did this.
Runs like a train.
One of the things that, definitely, definitely, James, James does know how, how much time we put into this because we had, uh, we had Y12 here, we had TVA here, I brought them all, and they hooked up monitors and they did, they did everything they could to help us, but, you know, uh, a lot of times when people come like that, it's always good weather. You know, it's not the weather that you need like this morning that, uh, that, you know, changes the, the, the goal line. Uh, but one of the things that for sure is that we have done our homework enough now that we know how to do the surge protectors on the three-way, three, three-phase systems at the disconnect. And so this is something that's going to pay us in the long run so that if there is a influx or, or a, uh, a less energy surge, uh, this unit should kick off. So we've done our homework to make sure that we have this in place, too. And they're gonna, I sure hope it works if it, if it's a positive, or I've just dug a hole. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is consideration of bids for vehicle for the Newport Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, this budgeted monies, it is a request to buy a four-wheel-drive vehicle, a Ford Explorer, to replace a 2013 Dodge Charger. As the, it is the black Dodge Charger that Jason Ramsey drove and did a whole lot of work in, and it was actually deeply impacted in a crash during the, an attempt to arrest a federal fugitive several years ago. And it is, uh, it's at the point where we're going to be a fad in it more than we can ever get out of it. So we'd like to go ahead and replace that vehicle, and you have the, the fund, the numbers, that are what it costs to put it, buy it and put it on the road, and then there again, like everything else post-COVID, if we can get it. So we want to go ahead and order it, and hopefully it'll come.
Is that from Ford?
That's Murfreesboro Ford, that's the state contract price.
Okay. Anything else you have?
No, sir.
Okay. Heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion to approve that.
That's the real motions.
I'll second.
You second, okay. All right, we have a motion then, oh, to approve, uh, consideration of bid for vehicle for Newport Police Department for the Murfreesboro in the amount of $38,259. It has been properly seconded. We need roll call.
How much?
$38,259.
Okay, and also the land there.
Also the, the land there addition.
Okay, yeah.
Is that okay?
That's in 3730.
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, Tina, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Yeah, consideration of bids for equipment for the Newport Fire Department.
Gosh, firefighting equipment's very expensive, this stuff's going on. So, uh, in, in March, I'd ask for you guys to approve to get some air packs for the new fire truck, uh, and we've got that and we've got those in. Uh, we've had some, some budgeted projects that, that didn't work out out of the fire department's budget, so I've got some more money, brought some things up, some other, uh, some other items up to priority. And I'd ask for you guys to get, to get three more air packs and three face masks and six bottles. Uh, with, with these three and the four, we have seven older style packs that are the 30-minute, and then all of ours now will be upgraded to the 45-minute, 4500 bottles with this purchase. Uh, we'll be getting this through a Sourcewell contract, and as I said, we, we do have money in the budget to, to cover this.
All right, all right, you've heard the presentation, board's pleasure, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the board then to approve the purchase of some new fire equipment for the fire department in the amount of $30,336, and it has been properly seconded. We need roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're now at, uh, comments from citizens, is there anyone?
I just wanted to remind you all that May the 28th is the annual Smoky Mountain Thunder Memorial Ride. It is a fantastic ride, they have thousands of motorcycles. Uh, the Fire Department's been gracious to hang the big flag. Our policemen do a great job directing the traffic. It's a police-protected ride from the Severeable Courthouse, Severe County Courthouse, all the way to the lookoff on Granger County at the Veterans Lookout. And Debbie and I have the, the honor again this year of carrying the police memorial flag. Just wanted to invite y'all, if you ride, to come ride with us, if not, shortly after 11:00, be out here at the 25E, 2570 intersection and watch a bunch of motorcycles come through town and honor our fallen.
Try my best to be there.
Thank you all.
You going?
If I can, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not missing the third or fourth, I guess.
Uh, Mayor, in conjunction kind of with that, I just want to remind the board and the audience that, uh, National Police Week is May 15th, 21st, and I believe May 17th is, is actually considered Police Memorial Day, so flags here in the city hall and 70 B, absolutely.
The 22nd is graduation of Goff County High School in Cosby, right?
The 20th, 20th.
The 19th is, uh, when we'll be decorating at the community center, which they'll be coming in for Grad Fest on the 20th. So when you see all those people up there all night long, that's what's going on, Grad Fest is going on on the 20th, uh, after graduation. So they'll check in 11:00, leave at 6:00 AM on the next morning.
Okay, since we're making announcements, I will announce that the Tennessee Picnic is sponsoring a golf tournament on May 22nd. Any golfers in the audience, welcome to come by and, and play with us and support the Tennessee Picnic. Uh, and this all goes toward, uh, the Tennessee Picnic celebration at 8th of August, fundraiser for Emancipation Day. Any other comments from citizens? You're none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are done.